It is 9:00 AM and we are ready to call this meeting to order. If you would, please stand with me for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Gracious Father, we humbly ask that you come into our presence today. It's summertime in Florida. It's hot, it's rainy, and we just are so grateful. We're grateful for this place that we live. We are grateful for this college. Its mission to the community to educate young minds and old minds alike. We thank you for perhaps a little downtime, a little summer vacation, a little time with family, a little time to recharge. We pray that the faculty, the staff, the administration take advantage of these moments, Father, because we're going to come through this with strong vigor to take care of what we are supposed to do. And that is to take care of the students of this college, to further their education. Father, be with this board, guide us, direct us, keep us, Father. Be with those on the road, traveling. Be with our fighting men and women of the armed services. Keep them out of harm's way. Bring them home. We love you, we praise you, we thank you. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We have a presentation of retirement resolution today. I'd love to invite up Jonathan Steele to join Dr. Williams up at the microphone over here.
Dr. Steele, Mrs. Steele. Whereas Dr. Jonathan Steele, Dean of Humanities and Fine Arts, began his St. Petersburg College career in 1991 as a professor in the Humanities and Music Department, where he taught Humanities in a variety of music classes and directed the college band. And whereas Dr. Steele proved to be a leader with many talents and abilities, and as a result was named Program Director for the Humanities and Fine Arts on the St. Petersburg campus in 1993. He served in that capacity until 2008, when he was named the Dean of Humanities and Fine Arts college-wide. And whereas Dr. Steele has always been an avid promoter of college arts and programs and activities, he was the overseer of the Music Center construction on the St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus and the remodeling of the Fine Arts Building. He facilitated the purchase of a new Steinway Concert Grand pianos for the Music Center and a classic Heisler pipe organ imported from Germany. He upgraded practice pianos to meet the needs of a growing music performance department and oversaw the establishment of the popular music industry recording arts program. And whereas Dr. Steele brought honor and distinction to the college through his willing participation over the years on numerous college and community boards and committees, including the Lippa Ratner Museum Board of Directors, he also served on the Education Outreach Committee of the Clearwater Arts Alliance and the Community Engagement Committee of the Florida Orchestra and the Clearwater Jazz Holiday Education Committee. Whereas Dr. Steele is admired and respected by his peers and his students and has served as a model to many, he will be missed. Now therefore, be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Jonathan Steele and extend to him our best wishes for enjoyment through the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College this 18th day of June 2019. Dr. Steele.
Thank you.
Whoa.
I took this opportunity to say mostly so we could say thank you. That's why I appeared here. Otherwise, I shun these public kinds of things. If you know me, you know that's true. But I want to say thank you. In our college-wide discipline meetings, I have always encouraged our faculty that the best way to deal with challenges is to focus on gratitude and to count your blessings. Just ask them, they'll tell you. I say, so I would like to do that right now. I say thank you to Carl Cutler for giving me the opportunity to come here in 1991. It was one of those life-changing moments that impacts you in a positive way forever. That was it for me when I got the opportunity. I'm thankful for Myrtle Williams and Ed Long, who are now with the Lord, and for Charlie Roberts for helping me get started. They were the team that helped get me oriented to how do you work at St. Pete College. I'm thankful for the many talented faculty. I'm humbled to see their talents, I just really am when I think about it. And the staff that I've worked with behind me and in the room, and especially our dean team, for the privilege of working with them over the years. I'm thankful to Dr. Cutler again and Dr. Cooper for assigning me as dean in 2008, and for Dr. Long and Dr. Williams to allow me to continue in that capacity until now. And so, you know, I came here in 1991 grateful to God for the opportunity. And I've shared with my supervisors each year that my gratitude grows every year. It really does. It's amazing the capacity you have for gratitude. It's just like your love for your children. It's endless. If you think of that, your gratitude for being in this place seems endless. It seems to grow every year stronger. And that's the truth. And so I leave here full of gratitude as a happy and proud and thankful employee of St. Petersburg College. So, thank you, Dr. Williams. Where are you? There you are. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Williams.
One of the things you don't know is that Dr. Steele's father was the president of Clearwater Christian College when I was a student. So I had a chance to get to know his family very well. His brother taught me algebra. Probably twice. But anyway, thank you so much, Dr. Steele. We're going to do a picture. Can you come over on this side?
Thank you so much for your service, for those great words, for your many years at St. Petersburg College. We'll move now to our comments section of the agenda. I'll start. I wanted to thank everyone for giving me last month off so I could go enjoy some vacation time. Thank you, Ms. Cole, for taking the reins for me. I had a great time, if anyone is wondering. I got to spend some time last week at the Seminole Campus for the Presidential Scholarship Ceremony with Dr. Williams. I just want to thank the foundation and all their help and support of this college, specifically in the form of scholarships. This was a great evening. I'm sure Dr. Williams is going to touch on it later. How many high schoolers or just graduated from high school, high schoolers? How many do we have there?
We probably had thirty there.
Thirty something?
And there were more like forty who--
They had equal looks of, I think, fear and excitement on their face about beginning the next phase of their life. We are happy to welcome them into the St. Pete College family. What a great achievement it was and it is for them to have scholarships to St. Petersburg College. I know that has to be a big breath of fresh air and relief for them as they start their journey here. But all very talented high school students with great GPAs, very involved in their schools, and we're happy to have them here. So that was fun to be a part of. Thank you for the invite. With that, any other comments from our board members?
Dr. Steele, congratulations. I've known Dr. Steele and his wife and family for many years, outside of this role as well as inside. He's been dedicated to his church, his maker, his family, his college, and he's always kept life in perspective and things in priority. And I'm grateful for all that you've done and wish you well in whatever endeavors you go. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to acknowledge Mr. Steve Shepherd on the Foundation Board of Directors is here with us this morning. So wave your hand. There you go. He's back there. And I think you were here last month and we didn't spy you back there. So, and it's wonderful to have another Foundation Board member. As you all know, I'm your designee to the Board of Governors of the Foundation, Board of Directors of the Foundation, and Mr. Turtle and Mike Carroll, the Chair, and I are meeting this week to go through some more coordination opportunities and visioning and really working hard. So we appreciate Mr. Shepherd being here and all of Jesse's work in getting these two organizations to continue to align to serve the students and the faculty and staff of the college.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Anyone else? With that, we'll hand it over to you.
Good morning, everyone. I have some exciting news. Two days ago, SPC's AS Computer Programming Program was named number one nationally by best colleges, best online program. So we were very pleased to receive that accolade. We also received some good news from Achieving the Dream. They partnered with the National Clearing House to look at college performance regarding student persistence and completion. And in many categories, SPC outformed other colleges, including colleges in Florida. We did a very good job in the number of students who did not drop out after three years of enrollment, which is an area that we've been trying to improve because it takes the average student about three to five years to get their AA degree because they go part-time or less than part-time. We've decreased that number of dropouts, and so congratulations to the faculty and staff for that. We've also increased the number of students who complete, which is a goal that we have had, that Achieving the Dream has given us credit for. And so I just want to applaud the faculty and staff for the work they've done to get us on the map with Achieving the Dream compared to other Achieving the Dream schools, including schools in Florida. And then finally, our leadership, SPC group, will have its graduation this Friday, and we have Rich Hume, the CEO from Tech Data, as our keynote speaker. He will be here at 11:00 AM. So those of you who want to crash, let us know if you want to be there. So I thought that was good. And finally, we got a letter from the United States Senator, now Rick Scott, congratulating Florida because our state colleges and our universities have been named number one in the world from U.S. News &amp; World Report. And so SPC sure shares in that designation and very proud of the team out here for the work that you have done to help keep Florida number one worldwide. So, good job.
Fantastic.
I think that deserves a clap.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Williams. That is fantastic news. We do have a few public comments today, so I'd like to invite up Robert and Teri to the podium first. Is it Aaron Higgins as well?
Yes.
Aaron, come on up. If you could, we keep public comments at the board meetings to three minutes total.
I've never been held to three minutes ever, but I'll try. I've written down so I don't forget what I want to say. I've written a few things down.
We've got a nice timer for you, too, which we'll restart here so they don't take away your seconds too fast.
My name is Bob Fay, Robert Fay. I'm a math professor, adjunct professor at Gibbs, have been for six or seven years now. A few points that I needed to address. The question that I get from other people that have been to these meetings was that you wanted us to come here, you want to know why the adjuncts want a union. So it seems simple to me what the answers would be, but I'll provide some for you.
Thank you.
The main concern that I've had is accessibility to classes, which is really a two-headed monster. My accessibility to classes and the students' accessibility to me. I can never tell a student, "Oh, you know, Mr. Fay," actually, I'm Dr. Fay, but they don't know that. "So, Mr. Fay, can I get you next semester for algebra? I like this intermediate algebra class." I don't know. I don't know what my schedule will be. I probably won't have algebra next semester, so you'll have to take someone else. Then I also don't know, am I going to have any classes? So that's what I mean by accessibility. It's a two-headed monster. Educational experience of the students has to be negatively impacted by that, I would think. The second point is, I can't meet with students because I don't have an office. I don't really have an office. I meet with them in the classroom or in the adjunct office, or in the hallway, or on the phone, but, and there are eight, at least eight empty offices on the math floor that are not being used, that for some reason I can't use, any of those. A known benefit of unions is that they get raises for memberships, and like, I'm also an adjunct at Hillsborough College, like many of us that work as adjuncts. We work in multiple schools. So at Hillsborough, they've already got a union, they've already had raises. So a benefit of, a known benefit of unions is that the adjuncts get raises and maybe even through good faith bargaining could get vacation pay or something akin to that. Another point is I've had classes taken away from me that I was already scheduled for and had already planned for those classes, and there's no compensation when the class is taken from you, snatched from you at the last minute. The way this, the way the situation is set up, and this goes back to the accessibility issue, the way it's set up is a full-timer can come in and swoop down even at the last minute and take an extra class if they want from you, and now you've got nothing. Or you've got, you lose that class, even though you've already been told you're going to have four classes next semester. That might not be true if a full-timer decides at the last minute they want. So there's got to be a different way to do that, and maybe compensation if you have a class taken away at the last minute, at least. Student complaints could be handled better if you had a collaboration with a union to go into administrative meetings, for instance. I also would like to be included as an adjunct in faculty meetings, things that might allow me to be able to get connections, that would allow me to be a professional, to, you know, to have my career extended. There are committees I could sit on, there are meetings I could go to where I could offer my ideas, that I'm not, right now, allowed to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Fay. That's your time. Any questions or comments from the board before we invite the next one up? Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here.
You're welcome.
And Teri Lee.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
There's also a third speaker, Aaron Higgins.
Yes.
Doing public comments, so you'll reset the timer, I'll start.
You got it.
Good morning. My name is Teri Lee. I began teaching as an adjunct faculty at St. Pete College not quite three years ago, and so far I've taught four different courses for the Natural Sciences Department, all closely related to my degrees and professional experience. I've benefited from the generous help of my Chair, Amanda Gilliland, Dean Natavia Middleton, adjuncts George Kish and Megan Cook, and the full-time professors, Morris Scanlon and Chris Nichol. Being new to teaching as adjunct faculty, I've learned by listening and observing, but now it's time to speak. It's clear to me the adjunct faculty at St. Pete College need a union. They need a collective voice and a seat at the bargaining table. The unfair nature of the existing pay system becomes more evident with each passing semester. Moreover, there's no negative feedback mechanism that's punitive to the administration for not addressing it. The pain passes down, but not up. The vagaries built into paying adjunct salaries takes unfair advantage of the adjunct faculty, who constitute more than 70% of the teaching faculty at St. Pete College, and unfair advantage of the students. The system also wastes the time and undermines the professional integrity of the chairs and the deans who must implement it. We need to work together to make positive changes. Here's one way the system passes the pain down to the adjuncts and the students, seen through my experience as a new instructor. After a year of teaching lower-level full science classes, the Chair asked me in February of 2018 if I'm willing to teach a required upper-level class. In May, it's a three ECH class, I say yes. Two weeks into the class, I get a letter from the Chair saying, "Because one student dropped the class, the pay for teaching the class will be cut by more than half to 1.25 ECH." Where is the logic here? How does a college get away with making the size of the class my issue? It is the college that has decided to teach the class, offer the class. As a professional, I can't fathom my pay suddenly being dropped 60%. Could you? And yet, I'm expected to teach the same upper-level material all semester. I'm told having my pay reduced means I can blend the class and meet face-to-face with my students half as often. Now the students are not getting the class they paid for. Before long, my Chair asked me to teach another upper-level course. This time, I need to know the pay. I can't be complicit in my own exploitation by accepting a job with no formal agreement on what the pay will be. The Chair can't say for sure, so I email the dean to get a clear understanding so I can respectfully accept or decline. The dean could give me no clear answer then, and the administration has none now. Why should they? When the pain is being passed down, why hurry? This excellent college--
Ms. Lee, I'm going to have to cut you off if you have one more final point.
--deserves to treat its employees better? Let us begin with an adjunct union. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Is that correct? Seventy percent?
We'll send you the data.
Do what?
We'll send you the data.
Okay.
That's correct. Seventy percent of the teaching staff here is adjunct.
Okay.
The majority of the courses.
Yeah.
I'll talk about--
Mr. Higgins.
Hi, good morning.
Hi, welcome.
Good morning.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a couple other comments about that in response to some of the things that have been said about adjuncts, excuse me, about this being a stepping stone or entry-level position and those kind of things, or a part-time position. I've heard that many times. On the note of adjuncting being a stepping stone to another position, one of the problems is that full-time positions have been phased out over time, that that percentage has been growing, that adjunct percentage has been growing. So as much as we would like to get full-time positions, there are fewer and fewer available. And also, I want to respond to that because, in my opinion, teaching our students is anything but entry-level. It's anything but a part-time job. I don't do, I don't teach my classes in any kind of a part-time way. I approach them just as seriously as any full-time professor would, and so I expect to be treated as a professional in that manner. And I also wanted to congratulate Dr. Steele on his retirement and point out that that is another thing that has been taken away from us. I would really like to get in this room many of the professors that do not have retirement, that don't have that to look forward to, won't be awarded anything like that. Not only do we not have retirement, we've also had our social security taken away from us as well. We don't earn social security. So I wanted to just point those things out. But the major thing that I came here to ask about was allowing us to go through with this union vote. Recently, a very expensive law firm was hired that has been hired by other colleges to work against their union-forming efforts, and I've come to ask that the board does not follow through with that, with that plan. For one, it's a waste of resources for the college. And Mr. Foster, I remember in the last Board of Trustees meeting that I attended, you spent some time discussing a few thousand dollars in the Study Abroad program that was really bothering you, that we couldn't nail down and do something about that few thousand dollars. I'm assuming that the law firm that's being hired is a lot more than a few thousand dollars out of our budget. That could be used to support adjuncts, do other things with that money. So I'm here to ask that you allow us to do what we would like to do and have this union vote and not work against it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Any more questions or comments from the board before we move on with our board meeting today?
I have a question. I'm sorry I'm late, but I have a question. Did several people speak or just one?
Three.
Three. Any one of them can answer a question for me. I just want to know why you would want a union. I have asked that question. I'm glad you're here, because I've been asking the question of the part-time-- come up to the podium. I've been asking the question for full-time faculty, and I want to know that from you all. Why would you want--
Deborah, could you specify a little more clearly what you're trying to get at?
Well, I mean--
Because they've given many reasons--
I was going to say, I think we've provided quite--
Okay. Well, I'll watch the tape. I'll watch the tape.
Collective bargaining, pay, better scheduling, class sizes. We have a very big list of issues that we would like to discuss.
Dr. Williams will provide us with the list. That'd be fine.
Yeah, I've provided that.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate it. At least you guys come.
The job has devolved or evolved into something where 70% of the people are now that are working at the college as professors are adjuncts, and they don't have the same benefits as the full-time people. It's that simple.
It's a different job.
But it's the same job. It's just described differently.
We won't get into it.
Mr. Higgins, we're going to close--
Mr. Chair, you gave me the time. Let me, I can, I know how to shut it down. Just give me a second. Okay? Please.
It's shut down now.
No, no, it's not. Give me a second.
Go back and look at the minutes.
Give me a second, Mr. Chair. You gave me the time. I asked the people, if you didn't want them to come up, you should have said, "No, don't let anybody come up." Give me a second.
We're now on to two different questions, Mr. Higgins.
Okay. So, thank you for coming, and I appreciate that. We may agree to disagree on it, but I at least respect the fact that you came and that you vocalized why you see it differently. I'll get the list from Dr. Williams, and I'll probably make some comments at our next board meeting in August, if that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, real quick comment. And, no, this--
Shut me down. I'm talking.
The comments section is shut down.
Okay. I just wanted to offer that the list, I've updated it, so if you'd like an updated list, I'd be happy to provide that.
Interrupting me doesn't help. Thank you to the adjunct professors that came in. I was an adjunct in the paralegal program at Hillsborough Community College in 1990. It was a very rewarding experience. I understand some of the frustration, certainly in the '90s. We didn't have near the techno, techniclot, techniclot, well, I can't even say it. Technological advances that you all have access to now, but I have a great deal of respect for the adjuncts and the service that you provide to the students. I don't know that the union's the answer as far as collective bargaining. You still have to go through that. There's a long way to go. I understand the why, I understand the how. The college is going to take a position that will, that we believe as a board will best serve the institution, the faculty, the staff, the budget, and we're going to proceed accordingly. But we do rely upon the adjuncts. I've learned a lot today, and I thank you to those that had the guts to come in here and address the board. Thanks.
Thank you all.
May I make one comment, Mr. Chair? If you could also send me the new change list, because the adjuncts have not met with me. So it would be nice to have the list, if there's a new list, so that I can pass it along. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. We'll move to review and approval of minutes from our Board of Trustees meeting dated May 21st, 2019.
So move.
Do I have a second? I have a first and a second. Any question, comment before we vote? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We'll move to our monthly reports from General Counsel. Ms. Gardner, anything to report?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to let you know that we're still reviewing and compiling an update on the legislative summaries, and so that should be provided to you. We'll get that out certainly as soon as it's finished and certainly before the next board meeting.
Thank you, Suzanne.
That's it. That's it.
And now for student success and academic achievement updates. I'd like to invite up Ms. Wright and Dr. Delgado to the podium, please.
I'm excited about this presentation. This is the Johnny Ruth Clark chapter of the National Association of Black American Affairs, and it is one of, if not the only, faculty administration and staff-led organization inside the college that supports students as well as grow employees. And so, I ask that they come and share the work that they're doing that aligns with the scholarship.
Good morning, Chair of Stone Cypher, BOT members, and Dr. Williams. I am Lucretia Wright, President of the National Council of Black American Affairs. I will present information to you today on the NCBA. It is with great pleasure that I'm able to inform you about Dr. Johnny Ruth Clark, who was dedicated to improving the lives of others through academic excellence and community service. As a result, SPC established an academic scholarship in her name. She was the first, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. She was the first to receive her PhD from the University of Florida's College of Education. In the 1950s and the 1960s, she was the dean at St. Petersburg Junior College. I would be remiss not to mention that she also taught at my alma mater, FAMU, but because I'm not biased, she also taught in Pinellas County and Bethune-Cookman University. What does NCBA do? What is our history? In 1999, we were established. We received our chart in 2001, and we are an affiliate council of the American Association of Community Colleges. We're passionate about managing the JRC scholars. The goal is student retention and success. The mission is to develop collaborative relationships that promote opportunities for faculty, staff, and students. In addition, we are in voice for issues affecting African-Americans to formulate policy and decision-making. The vision is to support creative initiatives that enhance access and opportunities for What are the requirements of the scholarship? Graduating seniors in Pinellas County submit an application along with two letters of recommendation that is reviewed by SPC, faculty, and staff. After students are selected, they must maintain a 3.0 GPA. The scholarship offers 12 hours per term for two years. Students must attend a mandatory orientation, attend minis hosted by the chapter, meet with an advisor prior to classes, and complete 20 hours of community service. Each year, an award ceremony is held in July. We have sent invites to the Board to attend the award ceremony July the 15th at the SPC Music Center. The time is 7:00 PM. The next question is, what does the success data reflect about the scholars? The funding is provided by financial aid fees. As you can see in the information up here, the new recipients decreased from 2015 to 2018. That was due to decrease in funding. The next two columns you'll see is the award amounts, and you'll see an enrollment, enrollment increased by 1% from 74% to 75%. We had an increase in the average GPA of 11 tenths. In 2018-19, which is this current year, we had 52 recipients and the, excuse me, we had 52 recipients, and the enrollment was 96%. The GPA was over 3.0. In 2019, we are projecting 75 recipients. In keeping with Dr. Johnny Ruth Clark's commitment and passion, the organization is engaging faculty, staff, and students. The pitch is to put the organization's commitment to academic excellence and community service. As you can see on the far two left slides, in the fall, we have an orientation for all our new scholars. In the spring, as for our second-year scholars, you'll see we volunteer for Habitat for Humanity, and we also hosted a regional conference at St. Petersburg College. I will now turn it over to Dr. Delgado, who will go over programming and goals for the program.
Good morning. I'm Meg Delgado. I'm faculty in the College of Ed, and I serve as Vice President for Programs for our chapter. And I would like to thank you for the opportunity today to share. I'd want to start on the annual programming of our chapter, specifically the plans that we have for our upcoming academic year. I believe these efforts are important because they sit in the bigger context of our community of care mission. The activities are intended to support faculty and students and staff as we work together to improve diversity, extend educational opportunities that we know that make an important part of SPC, and foster professional development in all of us. So, the first that we have is our meet and eat, learn, and grow. You know, anytime food's involved, it's always brings people together in fellowship. This is really a unique take on the concept of a lunch and learn. We have these planned for each semester, one to occur right before our chapter meeting, and we invite a guest speaker to come in, and his or her topic is on the menu for the day. We invited Dr. Bill Lasasso last May. He came in as a representative of the Florida Dream Center. He brought his team, and he did a presentation on human trafficking. And I think his perspective enlightened all of us. It was very powerful to understand what's kind of happening in our own backyard in the Lealman community, which happens to be the community that the Gibbs campus serves. We will continue to invite guests on topics that impact our respective communities as we continue these lunch and learns. Something new that we're trying are book clubs. The chapter is hosting its first round of book clubs this month, next week. We are starting with Becoming by Michelle Obama, So Ever the Educator. I have brought my visual aid. We will start with this book. These book clubs will be faculty and staff-led small group discussions, and we believe that the book clubs will be a vehicle for those crucial conversations relating to diversity and race. We are also going to be using The Dream Keepers by Gloria Ladsen-Billings. She is a key researcher in cultural competence and the pedagogy that's related to that. And we're going to also use The Hate U Give by Angie Thomas. That was our SPC Reads book from spring. We had a lot of momentum and enthusiasm for that, so we're going to continue with that book as we host book clubs. Finally, our panel presentation, Let's Break to Educate, is an important part of what we do as a chapter. We have a history of hosting panels. We will have a session at Discovery Day this fall. We see it also as an opportunity to partner with SEDAL, and we will have a panel discussion as part of our Teaching and Learning Conference in the spring. We see the panel discussions as a way to continue these crucial conversations and a broader audience, to bring more people together, faculty, students, and staff. I'd also like to talk a little bit about the goals that we've crafted for the upcoming year. The goals center around the support of our scholars, our students, as well as our faculty and staff. And as Lucretia shared, our chapter works to mentor our scholars and provide opportunities for these students that include leadership, service, and civic engagement. So, I think it's really important, the work that we do for these scholars. I'd also like to point out that I am particularly excited about our programming efforts that have become more systematic as a part of our effort to plan for our chapter, the events that we think are important. And I'm pleased that our members see the importance of this and have supported and embraced what we'd like to bring forward as these programming initiatives. I think it's also important, too, that the administration supports these efforts because you are providing the resources that we need. For example, I was able to purchase sets of books that I can give to students and faculty and staff who don't have access and would like to borrow a book. That's a big part of helping us move forward, these initiatives that we would like to bring to the table. Our programming and chapter activities have also allowed us to work to continue to create that collegial environment that enhances the access and success, and works toward increasing awareness of diversity and helps foster the cultural competence that I had mentioned earlier. And this last goal, I think, is really a big part of why we're here. It's why we are a community of care. We work as a chapter to develop the collaborative relationships that strengthen and assist the agencies and organizations that are in our community. And these relationships, we know, really are an extension of the important partnerships that ultimately work to support our students, moving them towards success, and helping them in meeting their own goals. And so, with that, I'd like to turn the microphone back over to Lucretia for some closing comments before we open the floor for any questions.
I would like to give a special thanks to some people that have been very instrumental in the organization. A special thanks to Roy Slater for his dedication and support of the scholars. He's no longer with the college, but he did a tremendous job in working with our JRC scholars. Dr. Baptiste and I will now take on those honors of managing the scholars. Leanne Wilfredin in the Financial Aid Office, Michael Bennett in the Financial Aid Office, and all the NCBA members, we say thank you. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the Board today?
Quick comment. When Rick Baker was mayor, he, you know, it was always a focus to revitalize the deuces, and so, we had Johnny Ruth Clark Center. And then, when I was mayor, it was my goal to have a larger midtown campus for the college, and we plopped it right next to the Johnny Ruth Clark Center. So, there's been that synergy, just automatic there along the deuces, and it's great to see how it's found this niche within the St. Pete College family with these scholars. And Dr. Clark was truly, she's a legend, and the city wouldn't be the same without her. And the fact that we're continuing this legacy, it's pretty special. So, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions? I just want to say, these success rates are fantastic. The data you've provided here for the last three or four years is impressive to look at. And this chapter started in 99, you said?
Yes, 1999.
How many recipients have there been since then? Just off the top of your head, do you think?
We'll have to get back to that data later.
These are great numbers. Thank you all for bringing this to our attention and for the reminder.
Good job. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Next, we'll bring up Ms. Jeanette Hunt with a budget and finance update.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Stone Cypher.
Good morning.
Board of Trustees and Dr. Williams. This morning, my presentation will be three parts. One will go over the May 2019 budget report. Next, we'll look at the fiscal year 1920 operating fund budget, and then the fiscal year 1920 capital outlay budget, and then I'll request approval to adopt those budgets. First, looking at the May report, budget report, our tuition and fees, we brought in $62.1 million. You see here on the chart below for our tuition revenue, we are projecting about $527,000 more than what our budgeted amount. We'll see on the next slides the breakout of the tuition. Next, our state funding at $64.3 million. Included in this line item, we budgeted $500,000 for our industry certifications. We did receive our funding for those certifications. That amount is $579,000. Just to bring a comparison of last fiscal year, we had 754 certificates. This year, 836. Next, our other revenues at $5 million. Our fund transfers in, 1.7. We will do our year-end adjustments to transfer in approximately a total of $2.8 million for a total revenue amount of $133.2 million. Next, the breakout of the tuition revenue. On the top is the credit tuition. We're projecting about $1 million more than what we budgeted there. Our PSAVs, post-secondary adult vocation, about $21,000. And then, our non-credit, you've seen in the last few months, the variance there. We are working hard to change the model, and you'll see in the next fiscal year, we've actually adjusted the revenue amounts. Next, on our expenditures, we're about 91.6% through the fiscal year here. We have a little bit under $100 million for our personnel and benefits. Current expense at about $26 million, capital 1.6 for a total of $127.4 million. Our revenue over expense, 5.7 million. Again, we've been monitoring where we will end for this fiscal year, and we are still projecting a surplus. So, next, I want to go to the operating fund. What you've seen in the last two months that I presented, the information has not changed much. There are a couple highlights. I want to thank you. Last week, we've had individual meetings for you to review the budget in detail and answer any questions, so we'll go through some of the highlights. First, looking at our revenue for our student tuition and fees, we have continued to, we have continued to budget for flat in tuition, even though we have our plan for higher enrollment and retention. There have been some adjustments there to the non-credit piece, the PSAV, and also the lab fee revenue amount. I will say, there has been no student fee increases to any of the fees. Our state funding has not changed from last couple months. We have projected about a $525,000 increase there. Next, for our fund transfers in, we transferring in about $2.5 million next fiscal year. And then, one of the lines I'd like to highlight is our reserves. We had a three-year plan to reduce our reliance on reserves. We're thankful to report that we have achieved that. You saw last month that we were proposing $0 on this line item. Since then, there has been a change in implementation of Senate Bill 190. In short, what that means is that at the end of fiscal year 1920, we would need to be at approximately 7% of our reserves. If we're under 7% of that amount, of that percentage, we have to submit a plan saying how we will get to the 7%. There also is a maximum, meaning that if we're over the 7%, we have to submit a plan as to how we'll get down to the 7%. So, we've included here on this line item about $1.7 million to use of that fund balance. Those amounts will be used for some one-time funding, such as technology, and for professional Next, on our expenditures, again, this is very similar to what you saw last month. I do want to highlight a couple line items here. One on the instructional and faculty line item. This is due to retirements that we've had in the last year, also any replacements. That difference there has shown about $1.4 million. On our administrative and professional line item, the increase is about $984,000. This was due to this current fiscal year, we had one-time funding to support some of our student affairs personnel cost. Because it was one-time, we had to put it back into the operating budget this fiscal year. If that amount had not been paid by one-time funding, the reduction on that line item was $400,000. You see very similar numbers that you saw last month from the other line items, but I do want to note that you have been used to seeing the adjunct supplemental line item. Together, we've separated that. As I mentioned a couple months ago, we have been doing an analysis on those line items, and so, we wanted to make sure that we separated those for future review. Then, one of the line items that I'd like to talk about is the health insurance. When we last met, we have been meeting with our health insurance partners, and one of the recommendations is to continue to fund our health reserve fund. With that, we are approximately about $1.5 million to the health reserve fund. This equates to about $100 per employee per month for that line item. This is an employer cost. It is not a cost to the employee. For a total personnel benefits of $111.7 million. The next line item is our current expense. As you all are aware, we implemented a modified zero-based budgeting this fiscal year. The $725,000 is a result of that implementation. All of the budget supervisors submitted a plan, a budget request. Those budget requests were justified and also reviewed by Dr. Williams and the Vice Presidents for approval. The next line item is.
Ms. Hunt, can I ask a quick question about current expense?
Yes. Yes.
The page that we got that digs a little deeper into that, both utilities and services and fees went down as an expense. Was there a specific reason as to why that was, do you know?
Sure. The utilities went down because a couple years ago, we did a contract with a company called Synergistic. And with that, they have done some extensive monitoring. They've actually pinpointed some of the meter levels. They've also scheduled different settings for the HVAC systems, and they adjusted any, and monitored any building levels for set levels. So those were some of the changes.
When we met, I had asked you about the, what goes in other, other personnel expense. Were you able to detail that?
Yes. So in the other expenses, other current expenses, there are line items such as our printing, which is about $300,000. We have our contingency, which is about $1.3 million. We also have our transfers out for things like Grant Match, which is about $800,000, and some other things like copying, which is about $120,000.
And why wasn't there that number in the 1819 budget?
For the other current expense?
Yeah, other personnel.
It was in, it was in 1819.
In 1819, it shows other personnel expenses, zero. And then in 2021, it's 1.4.
1.5.
Are you asking about other personnel expenses or other current expenses?
Other personnel, which is what I had asked you.
Right. The other personnel expenses is additional pay. So those are things that, such as project deliverables, assessments that faculty members receive, pay for, any stipends, things like chair stipends. In the last fiscal year, what we've had is, and the past years, is that those line items were kind of hidden in the first faculty and instructional line item. In zero-based budgeting, we've asked for the budget supervisors to identify those dollars, and so we've separated it for this fiscal year.
So you have a more detailed budget this year.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So next, our capital outlay budget. That total budget is $35.5 million. Of that, $8.2 million is for capital improvement fees. You also are aware that in fiscal year 1920, no Florida college received any of our sum of digits money. With the $3.5 million, we're supporting that with construction bond payments, which is $2.7 million. $16.9 million for major construction projects. The majority of this is for the Student Success Center at the St. Pete Gibbs Campus. We also have $10.5 million for college-wide infrastructure and renovations. $9.1 million of that is for repairs, renovations, and remodels, and 1.4 is for technology infrastructure. We have $1.1 million for our internal construction personnel. These are personnels that work on projects. And $850,000 for existing projects and miscellaneous. This includes things like upkeep for the digitatorium, fire science, breathing apparatus tanks, with a contingency of $3.4 million. Any questions on the capital budget? If there are no questions, this is the time I would ask for approval to adopt the fiscal year 1920 operating budget, including the transfer in for $2.5 million from auxiliary fund and the fiscal year 1920 capital outlay budget.
Any questions for Ms. Hunt? Any comments from the board?
A second, and just want to say thank you. It might seem like we're not asking questions, but we all spent a lot of time last week going through this in, in detail as well. So thank you all for your hard work and the explanations and some of the adjustments that we've seen too made since our meetings last week.
And I said it at the last meeting I attended, I'm very happy to see that we've moved to a zero-based budget. I think this is beneficial in many ways to ensure the efficiency of what we're doing here at St. Pete College, and that funds are being allocated in the right places. And I also want to thank everyone, Brian Miles, Diana, for coming up with the capital outlay and the capital asset management list of things that need to be worked on at each campus, every single location that we have over the next five years. There is so much detail in that report and so many different items that have to be prioritized in the right order so that we can all function appropriately. A lot of work goes into that, so thank you, thank you to everyone involved with that process. With that, I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those for approval of both the capital outlay budget and the operating budget. Please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Want to oppose? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a human resources report and personnel report. Do I have a motion to approve that? A motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. And moving to facilities, there's a capital improvement plan, which you all saw in your board packet, and there's also a spot survey. Both Brian and Diana are here. If anyone has any questions, there is no presentation today for that. Do I have a motion? Second? I have a motion, a second. Any questions or comments for Brian or Diana? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you all. That moves us to the consent agenda today. You all saw the items in your packet concerning the consent agenda, all under new business. I'd like to take number, sections one through three on this. Then we will get to number four separately, which is the baccalaureate approval process, the board's self-evaluation, and the accounts receivable write-off. We'll do that later.
I'm going to take it all as one?
Sections one through three.
I'll move a free hold for new business. I have a motion and a second.
Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Any questions concerning the accounts receivable write-off before we vote on that separately? Those numbers are looking better than in years past. Thank you for the hard work on that, to everyone involved. That was a great report to read through.
I just have one clarification. I noticed that the debtors are not allowed to register or obtain transcripts until the debt is paid in full.
Does the write-off result in that? So then debtors can receive transcripts?
Once it's paid off.
But if we're writing it off?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Since we're writing off this debt, is this just a book entry write-off, and we still expect to collect the debt from the debtors?
Absolutely, yes. The debt stays on the students.
It stays on the student account.
Yeah, there's a hold on their account until it's paid in full, which will prohibit enrollment and getting their transcripts.
Do we have any type of appeal process or hardship waivers?
Absolutely.
Those students can come forth and say?
Perfect, thank you.
I presumed we did. I just wanted to clarify.
If that clarification, do I have a motion to approve the accounts receivable write-off report?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. And finally, the notice of intent to initiate the baccalaureate approval process. Any questions or comments on that report?
I'd like a new improvement.
Your motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right. That moves us to the board's self-evaluation and also the president's evaluation. Both of these items are informational in nature. I wanted to leave time for the board to be able to comment as we just went through these over the past few weeks. This was the first year, in my recollection, that the board has done a self-evaluation, and it's something that we'll be doing each year following. It is mandated now too, which makes that a little easier. This is, the board's self-evaluation was something we each did individually. This is something that will be reviewed and discussed in more detail as we do board workshops in the future, so that we can focus on where we as a board need to improve in some of the things we may see as, that we do as a group corporately that maybe we don't see within ourselves. So I think this was healthy practice. A few things that rose to the surface for me, and then I'll let others comment if they so choose. I think everyone on the board agreed that our engagement, both within the college itself, outside of board meetings, and also making sure we remain engaged in the community as it's directed towards St. Petersburg College can improve. I think this is something, and is an area that we'll, we'll always see room for improvements. But all of us are, in some way, shape, or form, leaders in different aspects of this community here of Pinnellis County, some in Hillsborough County as well, the region as a whole. And we need to always be focused on how we can tie our conversations and our relationships outside of St. Petersburg College into St. Petersburg College and see how we can better connect. And that goes for attending things that are happening on the college campuses as well, and making sure that we stay engaged there so that we know what's happening, we know what's going on, and it's not just a once-a-month board meeting that we attend. We need to get, get our hands dirty a little more and see, see behind the curtain a little bit as to what's actually going on and the great things that are happening at St. Petersburg College. And finally, I think everyone on the board was in agreement that we can do more to make sure that communication with the foundation stays strong and improves in the near future. Ms. Cole has helped in many ways with that over the past year, Dr. Williams as well, in making sure that we're working together, moving in the same direction. These are positive steps to take, but we have more to do. So with that, if any other board members have comments on the self-evaluation, the floor is yours.
I just want to say thank you, Mr. Chair, for providing that and asking us. Now, it is mandated, but I also think it's a very helpful practice and something that I had requested of Dr. Williams and Nathan was that as a board, if we could have a workshop to review some of these things, talk about our board responsibilities and obligations, and really look high level at where we are from a governance. We get together and very well do our strategic planning and get so many wonderful updates and stay on top of the operations administration as it fits in with our strategic plan. The, I appreciate the opportunity for us to get a little higher, looking at governance at a high level, and then with that, bringing the foundation board in as well to coordinate so both our financial interests and our extra financial interests, as well as the operations of the board are all moving forward in the same direction.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, board members. With that, we're going to move to the president's evaluation, which happened in the same timeframe. All of these evaluations are due, just so everyone knows, to the state by the first of July. Is that correct, the beginning of July? Somewhere around there. So this is the time each and every year that we go through this process. The president's evaluation was completed over the last few weeks. We had, I think, pretty productive and healthy conversations, each one of us individually, with Dr. Williams. And Dr. Williams provides us with a self-evaluation of what she has seen, things accomplished, and ways forward into the future. So we're able to review that, look at that, while we assess her performance over the last year with your all's help. This year's evaluation process went well, and it had a different feel from last year because, as Dr. Williams put it in her self-evaluation, this was a year more focused on action, whereas the year before, I think, we were focused on where we were going and what we were doing. With new leadership and a transition into that, and with a few new board members as well. Just a few of the high points. The college's financial position has strengthened, which is the first time in many years that we can say that. We're not relying on our fund balance because of that. Enrollment has increased this past year, and withdrawal rates are significantly down. We've all heard these stats. We've all been sitting in here for these board members, but these are good reminders of where we've been this past year. We're working on improving communication so that the employee experience gets better. We continue to focus on the community of care that Dr. Williams is talking about, and the utilization of minority vendors is up 14%. On top of that, as we just discussed, we're trying to strengthen those bonds with the foundation board as well. There are many other things layered within those high points that have been worked on, that have been done, including legislative meetings, meetings with leaders. Dr. Williams is out and about in the community more than I can count, but that's what we need as the head of this institution. And it's important to remind everyone too, that as we have these meetings, while the focus is on Dr. Williams' performance, a lot of this falls back on the faculty, the staff, and the administrators that we have here. Dr. Williams doesn't succeed without those working around her, working hard to make St. Petersburg College succeed as well. Getting the right people in the right roles for leadership and for work in this college is extremely important. We trust Dr. Williams' leadership with that, and she trusts you to make some of those decisions as well. And if issues come up and things arise, we'll go through the process of analyzing and assessing and figuring out where our benchmark is, is, as a board, to make improvements, to make things better. But we trust Dr. Williams, and we trust the staff that she's put in place around her and those that are working so hard to make sure that the students in our community succeed. That's why we're all here. It's easy in board meetings and in other situations to lose sight of that, but we're here for the students. We're here for the students first, and we're here to build a team of people from leadership all the way down to make that happen. A few areas that I said personally that we wanted to work on this year, and board members, again, the floor will be yours when I'm finished, to make any comments that you would like. I want to see continued improved communication with the employees and with our community as well. We need to always be transparent, and we need to always make sure that we are listening and we're able to make sure that the college can respond to the community's needs and that the college can also make sure that the employees feel tied in to what's going on in a big picture, which is hard at an institution as large as ours with as many different campuses and locations that ours have. I also want a continued focus on growing the effectiveness of our workforce program, like we've talked about so much this past year. There are things moving. There are changes in the works, but that's a focus that we have to make now as we continue on the road. And then I said, finally, I think we need to annually reassess our legislative strategy to ensure every effort's made, and we have the adequate manpower to secure resources needed for this institution. This is going to be an ongoing conversation every single year. Things in Tallahassee change every year. Leadership changes every year, and our needs as a college are going to change as well. So this needs to be at the forefront of our thought, and the board members are going to have to step up in an even larger way to make sure that we use every resource we have to give what we need here to succeed. Overall, Dr. Williams, you're doing a fantastic job. Thank you for taking the time with each one of us. There were many other things said in the conversation. There were many other things said in the conversation, but I'll leave it at that for now. Any other board members with any comments?
Give a nice synopsis. Kind of a state-of-the-college address. I agree. And Dr. Williams, thank you for your time this past week with some of our staff to discuss some pretty challenging issues, but, you know, you've gone from transition to governing, and I think we're all better for it. I do agree, Mr. Chairman, that we need to focus on funding and this mindset in Tallahassee that community colleges should go back to being junior colleges. I just think that's repugnant, and we need to do more to change that mindset. With the two new baccalaureate requests that we authorized today, there's a need in cardio-pulmonary, there's a need in nursing. There was an article in the paper over the weekend about the need for nursing, and we're meeting a need. That's why we became, that's why we didn't turn into a four-year school. We evolved into an institution that is now authorized to provide baccalaureate programs. But we still don't compete against, we don't have to. We don't have to compete against USF and the others. We work together, and this mindset oozing from Tallahassee is something that I'll commit to helping get over that. Anyway, thank you for your efforts, Mr. Chair, as well.
Thank you, Mayor Foster.
I'd just like to say congratulations. I mean, if you go through this universally, there is nothing lower than a four, and I think that speaks volumes, and I absolutely concur with it. From a priority perspective, I said it in our meeting last week, I'll say it again, I think we need a plan to address the African-American success rates, specifically males, but overall. I'd really like to see us come up with a plan for that and continue to focus on the workforce. I think that's where our biggest growth opportunity is going to be. And I agree with you, from a funding and legislative perspective, we all got to step up. We have relationships that we could use that we might not have done in the past. So I think that those are going to be the things that we're going to talk more about, how we're going to do a better job of.
Ms. Cole?
Just to not be redundant, but congratulations, and again, reiterating what you said, Mr. Chair, about it's a team effort. Dr. Williams' leadership sets the stage for the communication and motivation among the administrators and faculty and staff, and that motivation you can see with the communication we get from FSO is one thing that I highlighted to Dr. Williams last week, was just that in and of itself, and having the faculty's support coming in and the difference between a year and a half ago to today, and that is to be congratulated. Our areas of opportunity, I think, specifically along the same lines that you all spoke with our student success rates, but looking more into some of the DSO and ancillary and auxiliary programs. We spoke about confirming that those are mission-based, and if they're not mission-based, or why are we doing them? How are we doing them, and what is the cost of those types of programs if they are not mission-based? And how can we evolve them to be mission-based? So I look forward to having those types of conversations moving forward. You've already started with the workforce programs and how to align those and elevate those to what we need to do. I just had lunch last week with a major employer in St. Petersburg, and they were talking about the communication they've had with some of our administrators and staff in identifying programs and working with that employer, and they were thrilled to hear of the modifications to our workforce program and, you know, how they can then tap into St. Pete College and serve their employees. And that's exactly the type of enthusiasm, to Ms. Bello's point, that's exactly the conversations we need to be having as trustees with our colleagues and associates. So it's great. So congratulations on a wonderful year.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I agree with everything that's been said. I think Dr. Williams has done an excellent job. I think many people have it confused when they think I say certain things or do certain things from this day, but I serve in a capacity as a trustee. But I also know what Dr. Williams can do in a lot of situations and what she cannot. And so I'm a harder critic than all of you will ever be because I've known her longer, and I also trust her judgment as it relates to this college. But I also will push and push and push to make sure we get everything that we're supposed to get. I don't care who sits in that seat. I'm supposed to push them and to get everything that we're supposed to get, not only for our students, for the faculty, staff, and our entire community. I think Dr. Williams knows that I have some concerns about certain things. I share them with her, and that's it. That's where it goes when it comes to evaluation time. But overall, I have to say, I would grade her as an A on what she's done here at this college thus far, and looking forward to working with her in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbons. I think you bring up a good point. We all, every one of us sitting up here brings a little something different to the table, different relationships, different world experiences out there, and it's important to have all those and share each of those.
True.
Dr. Williams, thank you. We will move on from this, but I will say that, as Mr. Gibbons said, it wasn't all just sweet conversation when we got together one-on-one. Some of those things will remain private, but this is a great opportunity for us as board members to be frank and to be open and to be honest and be transparent. So we're grateful for that time that we have each and every year, and we do ask some tough questions that are difficult to answer sometimes. But thank you for everything you do, and thank you for all of you that support Dr. Williams and this college.
Can I make a comment?
Uh-huh.
All right. First, I want to thank the Board of Trustees, the time that you spent with me. We did have very candid conversations. I am extremely proud, not just for the eval, but to be the president of St. Petersburg College. I love all of you guys. I think the thing that makes me the most proud are the people that I'm looking at right here, because you're the ones who go out and do the work, day in, day out. You bring solutions to me, you provide me with advice, and sometimes I accept it and sometimes I don't. But I know that you have the college's best interest in mind, and that makes a world of a difference. So I'm very proud of each and every one of you. The first year, we did a lot of discovery. The second year, which will be officially, I think, July 3rd, will be the end of my second year, we did a lot of action, and we made a lot of bold moves and a lot of difficult decisions. We have a long way to go, and we have a lot to do. But in the last two years, we kicked butt. I think we did a very good job. We kept the college together and whole. We were able to hold on to everyone who's doing their job, and we've moved the institution from point A to point B. Now it's time to get us to point C. So we won't lift off the gas. We're going to keep going, and we're going to keep moving. But the work you have done, the bold decisions you have made, the difficult decisions you have made, makes a whole lot of difference. And the folks around this table have your back, and they're here to work with you. And we've always had an open door. We'll maintain that open door. But those who come through my door know that I'm looking for the solution, not just the problem. I'm looking for the solution as well. And so I want to thank you for the work that you have done and the things that we have done to keep SPC one of the top state colleges, not only in Florida, but nationally, and we'll continue that reputation. And that's something I get to experience as I travel. Oh, man, SPC is awesome. I heard so many good things about SPC. You guys are great, and we are all that, and there's a lot more that we can become for our students. And I agree, workforce has to get better. The work we're doing with all of our students, whether it's ethnicity, group, or a group in poverty, we also got to play fair with each other in the sandbox. Communication has to get much better, and it can't come from the president's office. It's got to come from you guys. And being positive and caring is very important to me. We can roll up our sleeves and do the tough work without being mean. And so we'll continue to do what we're doing, but I am extremely proud of you, and if I could, I would stand and give you an applause. I'm telling you, you guys have done a great job. Thank you, thank you, and thank you. That's all. I'll get off my soapbox.
Well, we're going to leave it right there because next is the president's report, so you're still on the soapbox.
Well, I don't even know what to say now. Okay.
I doubt that.
Well, first, no. We've done a lot of cool things since our last meeting. We closed the deal working with the Pinellas County School District. We are going to definitely implement the dual enrollment process as it has been intended, which brings more resources back to the college to do the work that we do with our dual enrollment students. Our K-12 partners agreed with us last week, and we believe we have gotten that straightened out.
Good.
At our last board meeting, we talked a lot about the legislative landscape and what we did the last session and what we need to do going forward. Right after that, all of the college presidents for the state system met with our commissioner, and we've come up with an alternative plan this year on how we're going to be more proactive and policy-based in our strategy and structure. We talked about a lobbying firm, and I've met with most of you about us, one, giving, you know, the foundation time to come up with the funds to support the lobbying firm, but to work closer with the commissioner this year before we implement a true agreement with a lobbying firm. And so I did contact those of you who were at the meeting who made the recommendation to ask you to reconsider that and for us to really look at lobbyists the following session if this does not work, if a different strategy does not work. Now, I believe we voted. I'm not sure, but I believe we did.
The president did in his own motion.
Yeah, we made a motion and we voted. I'm going to tell you, I hear you, I understand you. I totally disagree. I talked to several people in leadership, and they don't believe that the chancellor or the education department is going to be able to move that process forward with them. Agendas are just different, and while you're trying to service all the colleges.
And the K-12.
Yeah, the K-12. I mean, there is no way that we are going to get our share of what is actually deserved. And I think you'll hear from some of those legislators, because I've had meetings with them individually in leadership, that they wouldn't do that. They wouldn't move to have all of you work, because it's just not going to work. I mean, there are different needs on each one of these, at each one of these colleges. And whoever's in leadership, don't be fooled, they're going to watch out for their area of the world, and if we don't have anybody advocating for us, one of which, and I'm not saying any names because the senator asked me not to say his name, said, "Listen, the fact is, you need to have somebody camp down in my office every day that does this all day, all year, not from September this year to the end of session." So I don't agree, but if that's what you want to do, I'll go along with it, but I'm just telling you, on the record, I just, I don't think that's going to happen. I think we're setting ourselves up for failure by not having somebody to advocate for us. You know, one of the comments from inside the House leadership was, you know, "These people are doing this year-round. They're not doing this during session." You know, I told Dr. Williams, two days after session, three days after session, I was in Key West with Wilton Simpson, who's going to be the next president, president of the Senate, taking contributions. It's two days, three days after session is over, right? So you're starting your process now. People are doing this now during the summer, gaining relationships, making sure that they know the agenda of whoever's trying to get whatever in the next cycle. It is not the same as it used to be where you could wait until the day session starts. You know, we go up there and we talk to leadership, and they're automatically going to meet with us. It's just not the case. I mean, it's a different day. There are different lobbyists, they all do different things, they all have their expertise. But just like we have, you know, things here that we like to get accomplished, every state college has that. And I just, I don't see how, and I love Richard, don't get me wrong. Richard Corcoran is a friend of mine. I will tell him to his face, I don't see how you're going to do this, and I don't believe the legislature's going to do that because he wants to do it that way. It's just not going to work. So, I mean, I'll do whatever, you know, I'll go along, whatever the board, whatever your pleasure is here as a board, but I'm just, I'm being very honest, I don't see it happening.
Go, just from a practical matter, because I completely respect the Commissioner of Education's request, and so, but I also see trustee Gibbons. I mean, we're all in that world, and we see that. But from a practical aspect, we have the issue that the college would need to work with the foundation to ask for that money. And so I think from a timing standpoint, and this is something that Dr. Williams and I spoke about between the meetings, just in, she's been speaking with Mr. Turtle about, is it's going to be a longer process to get the funding to hire somebody anyway, I think is the bottom line. And so in spite of our motion and our action last month, I don't know that that would have necessarily resulted in immediate action from a funding standpoint. So depending what the language of that.
Would it be before January?
I don't know. I mean, I think that that's, it's an evolving conversation that hasn't even been broached with the foundation yet, and so.
I think we need to have that conversation first to then decide when we can implement a more forceful strategy.
Yeah, yeah.
The foundation board made their budget and plans, their term, it ended in April. So they have already.
Before we even had this conversation, they had had.
Correct.
So can we prioritize that on their agenda? And Ms. Cole, I'm going to task you with that.
When is their next meeting?
August. August is the next meeting, and we, we're having a planning meeting this week, but I think that that's something that Dr. Williams and Mr. Turtle have been talking about. Mr. Carroll's well aware of it, and so I think if we can come up with a plan.
Mr. Chair.
But I just wanted to raise the practical issue.
Let's leave it, I agree. I think leave it as is. Let Ms. Cole go to the August meeting along with Dr. Williams and bring us something back of what realistic looks like.
I agree.
Before January, and if we can accomplish it before January, then we move on. And if we can't, man, you got to go with what Commissioner Corcoran is telling you. I just, you know, I just want to be fair to you and tell you, since we've had that discussion, I've talked to several people in my own meetings that I already had set because, you know, we're putting our legislative agenda together this summer as well, our company. And so when we have those discussions, I bring that up, and that has not gone over very well because they're like, "Look, fine, if that's what you want to do, you don't want to do that." But I'm telling you, one of the issues you got is, I need, you know, one of them was that we got a paper and it said this is what our legislative agenda was. But, you know, and part of this is, remember, people from all across the state are going to these folks, asking them for a lot of things, so they're not going to remember our legislative agenda alone. I get that, right? But, you know, it really does go back to an old saying, a squeaky wheel does get the oil, right? And we got to squeak a little louder and a little longer and a little harder to make sure that we get boiled here. So depending on what we're trying to get, you know, so I think Ms. Cole going to the August meeting with them, coming back and giving us a fair assessment along with Dr. Williams is probably the best alternative that we have at this point for us to be able to make a really intelligent decision.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Gibbons. Any other comments, Dr. Williams?
I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next meeting is August 20th, 2019, right here at the epicenter. We're going to close this meeting out, and then we're going to reopen to a new meeting immediately following. Thank you all for being here. And now, we're going to reopen for the St. Petersburg Collegiate High School Governing Board Meeting. Thank you, Principal Metz, for being here.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Stumpfifer, members of the board, and Dr. Williams. I'm Starla Metz, the principal of St. Petersburg Collegiate High School. Thank you for the opportunity this morning to bring forth these agenda items for your review, and I will be requesting approval of the budgets, the policy and procedure manual, and the calendar. be requesting approval of the budgets, the policy and procedure manual, and the calendar. Let's begin with the budget. This is the proposed budget for St. Petersburg Collegiate High School, North Pinellas, Tarpon Springs. The official name is North Pinellas, so that's why the budget is in that name. If we look at the revenue sources, you will see that it's comprised of our Florida Educational Finance Program funding of $826,000, Title II Professional Development reimbursement from the state of $6,500, a transfer from the current St. Petersburg Collegiate High School reserves of $206,000, for a total revenue of just over $1 million. If we take a look at the operating expenses, you'll see the instructional cost of $373,000, the administrative and instructional support of $340,000, and total personnel cost of $741,000. Moving on to expenses, if you take a look at the expenses, some of the big-ticket items are the facility lease of $221,000 and the total current expense of $298,000. You may notice that there are some items there that do not have a dollar amount, the textbooks, instructional materials, computer leases, and the minor equipment. Those items will be paid for out of the charter school program grant funds. Therefore, we've listed them here so that you're aware of that, but they will not be coming out of the operating dollars. And then finally, we have a total budget of just over $1 million, so $1,040,036. You also see the transfer in and out for the dual enrollment fees. Are there any questions on this budget?
Okay.
Then moving on to the next budget for St. Petersburg Collegiate High School, St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus. Here you take a look at the revenue sources. We have a few additional resources. The FEFP funding is $1,461,000. Because we qualify for capital outlay, which Tarpon will qualify for in three years, we have anticipated $80,000 in capital outlay, the $6,500 for the professional development reimbursement, and because we are consistently an A school, $23,000 for the school recognition award, which Tarpon will also be eligible for after the first year. So our total revenue is 1.5 million. Moving on to the operating expenses, you see the personnel cost there. You may notice a decrease. That's because three of our faculty members are transferring to the Tarpon Springs campus, which is wonderful, because this will allow for new staff at both sites and increase collaboration among the two teams, which is exactly what we have envisioned. So we're very pleased with that. Our incoming new hires will start at the base pay, so we have a nice cost savings there. So the total personnel cost is $891,000. Next, we're going to take a look at the current expense. And you can see, of course, we have textbooks and instructional materials is a little higher than last year. That's because we have some new faculty members coming on board. And some of our current faculty members do not use a 10th grade textbook, so we've put a little additional funds into the budget in case our new faculty would like some different materials. The capital outlay funds used to help pay the cost of the lease. So the total budget would be 1.4 million. And then, of course, you see the tuition in and out and some healthy reserves. Any questions on this budget?
I already answered them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If I may respectfully request approval of both the budgets, including the transfer of funds from the current collegiate high school reserves for the Tarpon Springs budget.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Any opposed? Thanks.
Next on the agenda, we have the St. Petersburg Collegiate High School Policies and Procedures Manual and the calendar for the 10th graders. Remember, our 11th and 12th graders are on the college calendar. You may recall that I brought the Policies and Procedures Manual to you earlier this year at the February Board of Trustees meeting. However, because of the charter school program grant, we want to be sure that if they also want governing board approval, that we have your approval. Are there any questions on the calendar or the Policies and Procedures Manual?
Any questions from the board?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for both items, both the Policies and Procedures Manual and the calendar for 1920 school year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next, I am pleased to provide you with an update on St. Petersburg Collegiate High School, Tarpon Springs. Beginning with personnel, we have been interviewing last week and this week and hope to finish our interviews next week. I'm very pleased to report that we've had excellent candidates for the positions that we have open, and I'm confident that we will have great faculty and administration in place, both at St. Petersburg Gibbs and Tarpon Springs. The charter school program grant is progressing. Currently, we are just finishing up the planning phase. We have completed all the requirements of the planning phase and waiting for proof of the cashing of the check for the last payment for the website. The website is beautiful. We are also waiting for one document from Pinellas County Schools. I checked on that yesterday. I will have that document by Wednesday, and then I will send the final two documents to the state, which will be the implementation budget and that one form that is required. Once the state receives those two documents, they will review the rest of the documents that have already been uploaded, and we should have approval within about two weeks. As soon as we have approval, those funds will be released to us. We have all of the quotes ready, so as soon as we have the funds, we can begin ordering all the things we need to open the new school. So we will be working very quickly on that to ensure that we have the technology, the instruction materials, and the furniture in place for the beginning of the Tarpon Springs campus opening. Facility update, I would like to thank Diana Wright and her team. They have worked so hard on making sure that the Tarpon Springs campus is warm and welcoming and ready and plenty of time for students, staff, and our families. Walls have been put up to secure the area and create a nice, quiet working environment for the SPC mathematics faculty and their students. An intercom system, door locks and windows have been installed for safety. Carpets have been cleaned. Painting is going on as we speak, and it will be a beautiful place for our students and our staff to work. I'm also excited that we are going to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony, and those invitations have been sent out. Hopefully, all of you have received those, and I hope that you will be able to join us if your schedule permits. We're also looking forward to an open house on September 3rd. That will be an official way to welcome the Tarpon Springs faculty and staff into our area so we can begin collaborating and working together to ensure that we're all working to meet the needs of our students. We really look forward to that opportunity to meet with them. Thank you to Provost Davis for his support and his help in that initiative. Next, we have a floor plan of the space. As you know, we will be housed in the Michael and Evelyn Villaracas College of Education building. We're at the very end. If you look at the very top of the diagram, that would be Klosterman Road, and at the very end would be US 19. So if you go to the very last entrance at the top, that will be the main entrance into the collegiate high school, and the signage is already up. It looks beautiful. As you enter the building, there's a big window there where the administrative specialist office will be. That will increase our safety, so she will be able, or he will be able to see who is entering and exiting the facility. If you come in a little further, there's a nice little comments area there for students to sit in the morning or between classes. And then if you go to the east, you will notice that we have five beautiful classrooms, and we have our learning lab. Our juniors and seniors are required to give us two and a half hours a week of study time, and we also have weekly seminars that are required. So those things will happen in that big learning lab. If you head the opposite direction to the west, we have several offices, some for storage, and of course, some for staff. And then a beautiful comments area for our students to study collaboratively and to complete that study time requirement. Also a place for us to give presentations. We have a conference room and an office, and the restrooms at the end of that hallway. And then the rest of that area will be used by the mathematics faculty. The walls are up for security, so we can exit out any of the exits that you see on the floor plan. However, there will only be one way in and one way out. All the doors will be locked from the outside to ensure that we are keeping our students safe. And now, it's my pleasure as always to share some of the highlights of our 2018-19 school year. Once again, St. Petersburg Collegiate High School is a recipient of the Great Schools College Success Award. We are a state school of excellence and a bronze-level school as ranked by U.S. News and World Report. I'm especially proud of our community service. That really is a huge requirement for our students as part of the Bright Future Scholarship. But more importantly, I view our students as our future leaders, and they need to learn the joy of serving others and being involved in SPC, SPCHS, and our communities. I'm especially proud. That's the highest number of hours we've ever had from a senior class. While we've had a lot of student athletes over the year, this is the first time we've had a student athlete where we could have an actual college signing day, because she plays club ball, not for another Pinellas County school. So we had our very first college signing day for Erin Murphy. She plays beach volleyball. And Erin also won the FSU President's Honors Scholarship and will be in the honors program at FSU. Fifty-four of our seniors held one or more leadership positions. As you can see, our students were accepted at a variety of colleges and universities. Of course, we hope many of them will stay right here at SPC. And so we're happy for our 10% that are staying here. They truly love SPC, and it's always fun to see, after they get through the sophomore year, they're no longer a SPCHS student. If you look at their Facebook pages, they're SPC all the way, and the T-shirts change. So it's a lot of fun to see that. And finally, the class of 2019 was awarded over $3 million in scholarships. Now, it is my distinct pleasure and privilege to introduce Dr. Ian Call as principal of St. Petersburg Collegiate High School, Tarpon Springs. Dr. Call began at the collegiate high school in 2008, and he has earned a bachelor's degree in history, a master's of education from the University of Florida, and a PhD from the University of South Florida. Dr. Call has over 20 years' experience in education, including teaching at the middle, high school, and college levels. In addition, Dr. Call has served on SPC's Wellness Advisory Board, the Quality Enhancement Team. He was instrumental in helping us write the application for the second collegiate high school, and he graduated from Leadership SPC. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Ian Call.
Thank you, Ms. Metz.
I just want to say I'm really excited about being part of replicating SPCHS on the Tarpon Springs campus, and I want to thank Dr. Williams, the entire governing board, for giving me the opportunity. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Metz, if I'm correct, you're the second director of the collegiate high school, right?
Yes, sir, I am. Linda Benware was the first.
Okay. How many years has that been?
I've been here a little over 11 years.
All right. Mr. Chair, Dr. Williams, I want to tell you that it has been a complete joy to work with her and Dr. Sesta and her team, and so many other people that Ms. Metz has on her team. She always responds. You don't always like the answers, but she always responds. She's fair, equitable, her team. She always seeks diversity in everything that she does. Not to mention, she's married to a really cool guy who also does the same, who is the same way. But nevertheless, thank you for doing all that you have done over the years, and I totally enjoy working with you on collegiate high school stuff. And, you know, you are the most thoughtful person in any process that I've ever worked with. You are always thinking about other people, how to answer, how to respond, but also seeking inclusion and diversity. That is really key and critical. And you also picked a good man in Dr. Ian Call. I've known him for many, many years. He's going to be a great asset to your team. So thank you for all you've done for not only the college, but this community, and especially the collegiate high school students who have done so well. I mean, I go places, and I hear all the time of how well our students are doing places. The ones at the University of Florida, I check on them with the president when I do there, and I'm telling you, he has nothing but great things to say. New college over in Orlando and some other. So they're all doing very, very well, and it's a testament to you and your team, and also the resources that are given to those young people to be successful. And we appreciate all of that, and that's why we do it. So thank you so much.
Thank you so very much, and thank you to the board and to Dr. Williams and everyone who supports the collegiate high school. This is truly a team effort, and I am blessed to have the best team. They really are wonderful and talented, and they deserve the credit as well. But thank you so much.
Any other comments from the board? Thank you, Ms. Metz. We all echo what Mr. Gibbons said so well. Thank you for all your hard work. We're excited about the opening of Tarpon Springs. You know, I think we just need to figure out a way to shorten SPCHSTS. It's going to be hard, I think, for students to really rally behind that, but we'll figure it out.
I think it's going to probably be shortened to Tarpon and St. Petersburg.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
With that, we will close out our collegiate high school governing board meeting. Thank you all for being here.
All right.
That's right.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.